Vermillion City Council Meeting Scheduled for Monday, July fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. Come to order. Can you please call roll?
Toller, Lieber, Price, Holland, Jenna Wine, Helwig, Cheesman, Murrah, Mayor Hall.
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Does everyone have a chance to review the minutes for the July first, twenty twenty-four special meeting, the July first, twenty twenty-four regular meeting, and the July second, twenty twenty-four orientation session meeting? If so, are there any changes to the minutes? Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I move approval.
Motion approved by Council Holland and second by Council Price. Any other discussion on the minutes? All is in favor, signify by saying aye. What about saying nay? Minutes are approved. Adoption of the agenda. Does everyone have a chance to review the agenda? If so, is there any motions to adopt the agenda or any changes to the agenda? Council Price?
I'd like to move to add an executive session at the end for one dash twenty-five dash two subset five.
Motion to add executive session at the conclusion of the agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Council Holland. Any discussion? All is in favor to adopt the agenda as amended, signify by saying aye. What about saying nay? Agenda is adopted. Visitors to be heard. For visitors to be heard, if a person is addressing the council, you shall use the microphone at the podium, and please raise your hand to be recognized and go to the podium and state your name and address. For items not on the agenda, members of the public may speak under visitors to be heard on any topic not on the agenda, and remarks are limited to five minutes and no decision will be made at this time. On agenda items, public testimony will be taken at the beginning of each agenda item, and after the subject has been announced by the mayor and explained by staff, any citizen who wishes may speak one time for five minutes on each agenda item, and public testimony will then be closed, and a topic will be given to the governing body for possible action. At that point, only city council members and staff may discuss the current agenda item unless the council member moves to allow another person to speak, and there's unanimous consent from the council. Questions from council members, however, may be directed to staff or member of the presiding public through the presiding officer at that time. At this moment, do we have any visitors to be heard for items not on the agenda? Seeing none, move on to the next item. Public hearing for a special permit to exceed permissible noise levels for Ribs, Rods, Rock and Roll on our boat September sixth through and the seventh, twenty twenty-four, from five P M. to midnight.
Ribs, Rods, and Rock and Roll has applied for a special permit to exceed allowable noise levels for a street dance on Friday, September sixth, and Saturday, September seventh, from five P M. to midnight. All fees have already been paid for, and the administration recommends approval of this special noise permit unless information is presented to go against that.
Thank you, Nick. Is there any visitors to be heard on this? Seeing none, move to council for discussion. Note that there is representative for Ribs, Rods, Rock and Roll in the audience, so if you have any questions, you can answer.
I move approval. It's the same as last year's.
Motion approved by Council Holland, a second by Council Helwig. Any other discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye. What about saying nay? Motion carries. Next item will be a special malt daily malt beverage and wine license for Ribs, Rods, and Rock and Roll for the same dates. Go ahead, Nick.
Ribs, Rods, and Rock and Roll has submitted an application for a special daily malt beverage and wine license for September sixth and seventh. The application, notice of hearing, and police chief's memo are attached, and a detailed map is included for the requests for street closure. And the certificate of insurance that named the city as an additional insured, including liquor liability, has been received. All fees have also been paid for for this, and administration recommends approval of the special daily malt beverage and wine license as requested. Contingent on police recommendation.
Thank you. Again, are there any visitors to be heard on this? Move to council for discussion. Any discussion by council? Any motions? Motion approved by Council Murrah. Is there a second? Second by Council Toller. Is there any other discussion? All is in favor for the approval, signify by saying aye. What about saying nay? Motion carries. Next item will be going, there is no old business, so move on to new business. We have a request to close a whole slew of streets for Ribs, Rods, Rock and Roll event. Let's go ahead and take it away.
Sounds good. So on those listed dates, they requested those closures for the cook, so the teams can cook inside and around their vehicles and not worry about traffic. The annual cornhole tournament will be on Friday, and the car show will be on Saturday, and will require the additional closed space. They will also have volunteers clean up trash and ensure all waste is removed, and they will have, the organizers will visit affected businesses and hang flyers. And the two P M. closure part of, that's part of Main Street on Friday, is to allow the downtown businesses to have better access on Friday during lunch hours. This is also the same request as previous years, and police, fire slash E M. S. and street departments have been notified, and they did not have any concerns. The event coordinators will make trash cans available and have a range of cleanup crew to have all areas that are used cleaned up by twelve P M. noon on Sunday, September eighth, twenty twenty-four. With that, the administration recommends that the city council approve the temporary closing of those streets.
Thank you. Are there any visitors to be heard on this? Council for discussion? Any discussion by council? I know last year we quite a few for the car show. Are you concerned at all about having enough space?
Depends on the weather.
Okay. Correct. Yeah, I know last year it was, we even went into the middle of the road just trying to line up. Correct, yeah. Motion approved by Council Holland. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Price. Any discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye. What about saying nay? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item will have a resolution to approve the twenty twenty-four pre-disaster mitigation plan for Clay County. Sophie.
Hi, everyone. My name is Sophie Johnson. I'm the Community Development Manager at the Southeastern Council of Governments. We're a planning and development district out of Sioux Falls. We assist six counties in southeastern South Dakota with grant and loan writing and administering those grants and loans, and we also do some land use planning, comprehensive plans, municipal code, zoning ordinances, those types of things. But today I'm here to kindly request you all consider adopting a resolution to adopt the twenty twenty-four pre-disaster mitigation plan. Clay County Emergency Management hired Southeastern Council of Governments to update this plan. It needs to be updated every five years, and you all adopting the resolution essentially allows you to be eligible for competitive grant funding through FEMA. And this is especially important because of those, the June flooding event. I suspect, I don't know for sure, that it might be a presidential disaster, and what that means is South Dakota gets extra grant funding for competitive grant funds. And then the city of Vermillion included some future mitigation actions that it would like to do, and so we might be able to start taking some of those off with some grant funding if we were to apply. I can answer any questions you have, but the the plans on our website, it's, I want to say, close to two hundred pages. City staff participated in a lot of it, so they could certainly fill you in, too. I know it was very enjoyable for them. We had five meetings, six meetings with the public hearing, and they attended every single one, so happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Sophie. Is there any visitors to be heard on this topic? Seeing none, council for discussion. Any discussion by council? Motion approved by Council Murrah. Is there a second? Second by Council Jenna Wine. Any other discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye. What about saying nay? Motion carries. Thank you, Sophie. Next item moving along here, resolution authorizing filing for a loan from the South Dakota Housing Infrastructure Financing Program.
Well, before we leave that last time, I do want to thank Sophie. I've been through a few of those different programs in my time, and Sophie did a very nice job of you and Harley. The process is much better this last time to do the pre-disaster mitigation plan, so thank you for that. And I'd recommend everyone participate in the public hearings. It is very exciting. Anyway, the item before you on this agenda is an application for South Dakota Housing Development Authority to finance infrastructure program. You might recall about this, well, it was in July of twenty twenty-three, we brought an application before you to apply to this same program, and we received one point four million dollars in funding for the Jock Pol addition. That is for what we were calling Phase One, which is Baylor Street between Stanford and James, and what we call the first two legs of James Street, which is the legs of James Street that abut the law enforcement center. So we went through that process, were successful in receiving one point four million. And if you wonder, CCOG was very helpful in that process as well. Sophie wrote those grants, and I think there's one weekend, we probably talked to each other more than we did our, anybody else, but we got those worked out and got that application successfully funded. Fast forward, we go through other steps in the process, and at the last meeting, you approved the project plan for Tiff District number nine, which is the both Phase One and Phase Two. And in that project plan, we estimate borrowing two million and thirty thousand dollars as part of our funding to put in all that infrastructure there. A million and thirty thousand of that is coming from our Light and Power Fund, if you will. It's kind of an interdepartmental loan from one fund to the other. And then we were looking at borrowing approximately in from our local banks, who've been great partners with our Bliss Point one and two projects. In looking at this, we are also eligible to borrow some money for Phase Two, which is the remaining portions of James Street. We can borrow against the South Dakota Housing Development Authority's loan program. They are all out of grant funding, and so we can only get a loan at this point in time. It is a two percent interest loan, which while our banks are very helpful, they're not quite that competitive, nor is that really realistic to expect that our banks can come in at two percent in this day and age. So what's before you is a resolution to authorize applying for this loan from South Dakota Housing Development Authority for at two percent. We can, just like with the grant program, no more than one third of our eligible project cost can be received in loan funding. So if we were successful, that roughly a million that we're looking to borrow from our banks would be reduced by two hundred and sixty thousand five hundred dollars. That's what we would get in the S D H D A loan. The rest we'd borrow from the bank. So we would have a portion of that second million, that which isn't coming from Light and Power, a portion of that second million coming from S D H D A at two percent, and then the remaining balance coming from our local banks around the seven percent mark. So it does help the overall project cost, which enhances the probability that we will pay off the stiff district at all, as well as sooner, which the goal is, the sooner the better, so we can restore all this property to the tax rolls. I think that pretty much covers it. Sophie's been a great help in terms of putting this application together. We'd recommend approval of the resolution to apply for a loan from the South Dakota Housing Development Authority's Finance Infrastructure Program.
Thank you, John. Is there any visitors to be heard on this topic? Council for any discussion? Council Holland?
John, I should have thought of it sooner. You're saying it's, we can get, most of the thing is about two hundred and seventy thousand?
That is correct, yes.
Well, versus two, two million dollars, I would think it'd be six hundred. We can't count the money we're getting from the electrical company?
No. So what they look at is every single family lot in this program has a value of twenty-five thousand is the maximum amount. That's the value that they place on there. Well, we have nineteen lots that are part, that would be, that would be impacted by Phase Two. Well, nineteen times the twenty-five thousand is like four hundred and some thousand, if I remember right, four seventy-five. There is still a limitation that no more than a third of the project cost they will award, whether it is grant or loan. That's what's dropping us to the two sixty. And they will only fund, because the grant covers Phase One, which is Baylor Street and the first two legs, it's treated as a separate application and a separate project. So we are only eligible to the seven hundred and eighty-one thousand and, oh, seven eighty-one, six, excuse me, seven eighty-one, eight hundred and six thousand was what the bid was for Phase Two or the alternate. So that's the number that we're going. It's a great question. We're going, we get no more than one third of the seven eighty-one, eight oh six.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any discussion? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Council Holland. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Cheesman. Any other discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye. What about saying nay? Motion carries. Our next item is a resolution to create a Tiff District number ten for the property formerly known as Cottage Village trailer court, and a portion of the land blader.
I think the mayor kind of cheated on the description. We were looking forward to you reading everything. But I think you adequately described.
You can.
I didn't think you want to listen to that. But the mayor adequately described how we would understand or how we would locally reflect on the location of this, is it is, it's a former Cottage Village site. If you're relatively new to the community and aren't familiar with that, it'd be the southeast corner of Cottage and Duke Street. There are mobile homes there until about two thousand seventeen, eighteen, right in that timeframe. We have a developer who's interested in redeveloping that site with a series of twin homes, and they submitted a legal notice that we were going to have a resolution before a Planning and Zoning Commission at the July eighth Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and then tonight at the July fifteenth City Council meeting. Prior to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, they asked to postpone consideration of that resolution while they're still working through some details. As we had already advertised the public hearing for both July eighth and July fifteenth, you as a city council in this case need to still have the public hearing, receive any comments that might be offered, and then close the public hearing. We'd recommend taking no action, as the applicant at this point has chosen to postpone it. I don't believe that the project is dead by any means. It's just they're still putting some pieces together and working through that. There would be a new notice that would be filed, that would be published for both the Planning and Zoning Commission as well as City Council when they're ready to move forward. Then we also notify the other local taxing districts here in Clay County of this potential item on in the respective agendas. Skylar Mickelson with Representative the applicant is here. If you do have any questions that you'd like to ask of him, again, we just recommend that you open the public hearing and receive comments and take no action.
Thank you. Any visitors to be heard on this? Seeing none, move to council for any discussion. As City Manager said, that there's a representative here if you do have any questions. Oh, Council Holland?
Is it true this delay is just longer for you to understand the property description? It's, it's a page long. I can't.
Yeah, that took a while to type out, and I hope I don't have to do it again. And I'd have to read it. I mean.
Do you have any idea when you will have a decision? I'm talking months, weeks?
Weeks, and hopefully relatively soon. The weeks comes as a result of the amount of notice required to get here and the steps you take procedurally. But as far as in my court and in our camp, if you will, I'm hoping to have a final decision, a final direction, I should say, in the next two weeks, soon as possible, though, surely.
Thank you. It's good to hear.
Council Cheesman?
I'm wondering, is some of this housing going to be considered affordable housing?
It will, in as far as the state's definition of affordable housing, that being the Department of Revenue, and that amount is revisited annually. It's currently at, it sets a maximum limit, and right now that's at three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Now, tentatively in this project plan that I'm looking at, that I realize you don't all have in front of you, is subject to change, we don't estimate that our houses would sell or assess at that level, but three eighty-five is the maximum limit to comply with affordable housing.
Any questions? Is there a motion to? Move to close the public hearing and take no action? Motion by Council Price and second by Council Holland. Any other discussion? All is in favor, oh, sorry. Council Helwig?
I just want to say, since, you know, we haven't really talked about the actual issue here in a while, and, you know, John just mentioned how it wasn't twenty seventeen. I remember just before I came on the council, and it was a really difficult and challenging moment for our community, and a lot of people who were sort of forced out of their homes. And so I just want to say that I'm really excited. It's finally now we're six years later, the entirety of the time that I've been on council, we're finally making steps to actually building something and getting people to live in that area again. And so I just want to say thank you to everyone involved that we're finally moving in that direction, because I feel like all those folks who left their homes in that place, you know, they did so sort of with the, and all of us with the expectation that there would be new housing there. And so I'm glad that finally something is happening there. So thank you, everyone.
Motion on the floor. Any other discussion? All is in favor of the motion to close the public hearing and take no action, signify by saying aye. What about saying nay? Motion carries. That'll conclude the new business. We have no bid opening, so City Manager's report.
Thank you. Just a couple of items. We have several upcoming board or commission meetings before the city council meets again. Our Historic Preservation Commission will be meeting this Wednesday, July seventeenth at nine A M., and that's in the Powell Conference Room here at City Hall. Business Improvement District number one will also be meeting on Wednesday, July seventeenth. That's at three P M. also in the Powell Conference Room. Business Improvement District number one is the board who oversees the two dollar per night proctor hyper tell room, that fee that they meet about three, four times a year. Not to be outdone, our library board is also meeting on July seventeenth. That is at six P M. in the library's small conference room. Our Human Relations Commission meets on Thursday, July eighteenth at five thirty in the Mamur Conference Room here at City Hall. Planning and Zoning Commission, that will be meeting next Monday, July twenty-second at five thirty. One of the items on their agenda is performance standard regulations for conditional uses in a heavy industrial zone. This is a discussion that came out of planning and zoning with regard to the Masava expansion and the conditional use permit there, and how do we address that process? In particular, there was the piece that talked about homes within a half mile or a mile up there. So they're looking at some performance standard changes. That would be in the form of an ordinance which would work its way to city council after they have a chance to review and discuss that. If the weather holds, and it looked pretty favorable earlier, we will again be fogging for mosquitoes. We hope that they will relocate. That would take place this evening. We have two different trucks that'll be running, and they hope to get the entire community covered in one night. We saw some pretty great results last week, last Monday night after they fogged, and the numbers are such that we can again fog as well as the time that has expanded between the last fogging and this fogging. And then, quick thank you to Alex Ruth. This is her last city council meeting before she will not be here on August fifth. She's been a great help this summer while Jack has been away from us, but he'll be returning, and Alex will be moving on to her continuing studies at U S D. But thank you, Alex, for all the work that you've done for the community this summer. And then Dan, I'm going to have him put up a quick picture. The city council saw this at noon, but I think it's worth noting, we lost, as I think everyone in the community is very well aware, our three main lines that cross the Vermillion River to deliver the sanitary sewage from the community to our treatment plant on the south side of the river. We had those taken out on this, two of them we lost the seventeenth, the final one on the twenty-third. And so during that time period after the twenty-third, unfortunately, we have been, the sewage was dumped into the Vermillion River. The staff worked very hard to create a temporary line between Main Lift number two over to Main Lift number one. And then what you can see there, that was Deep Foundation Group with cooperation with Midwest Engineering and RP Constructors basically built that temporary suspension. It's a pipe suspended above the water. That may not be the best angle, but hopefully you can get that from the picture, the pictures there, that has taken the sewer across the river instead of dumping into the river to our treatment plant. So hats off to our wastewater crew, the water crew, parks and rec, street department. It's been a multi-departmental effort to get things to where they're at. That temporary line was installed all by city staff. This line that you see in this picture was installed by the contractors that I mentioned. That line will service for about ninety days. It's not one that we can use through the winter months. Long term, we unfortunately can't use it. The state doesn't want to have that suspended across the river. Staff thinks it's pretty cool, that we are going to lose that battle. Nonetheless, we think that it works well. And also, thank you to the city council that you entrusted staff with that emergency declaration last time when we moved forward to get this constructed. Hopefully, we've done a good job of keeping you informed where the steps were at, and that we now have a temporary solution to, to move our sewage. I will say the city council was even working on bumper stickers or slogans as to how we keep our plan alive. We won't go into those, but your city council's been very vested in this project and has worked very hard along with staff and contractors to, to secure a solution to our sewage for at least ninety days, and then it will be more public formats, the more traditional formats as we move forward to a long-term solution. Again, the city council saw many more photos of this at the noon meeting, but we just want to kind of update the public. We did do a press release, but sometimes a picture is, is worth a lot more words than what the press releases. So kudos to all those involved. We didn't want to be in this position, but it is something that I think is going to work for us, hopefully for the next ninety days, and we'll be bringing you proposals for the time period after that. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, John, and again, thank you to all your work and city staff's work as well resolving that issue. On that note, the invoices payable will be the next item. Has anyone, has everyone looked at the bills? Is there any questions in any of the items? Or is there a motion to approve the bills? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm just going on the flow of things. Yeah, there is. There should be bills. Nope, they're not in the email. Yeah, they're not in electronic packet.
There's also one.
Yeah. If, if there's one in the packet, Dan, can you put it on the screen, please? Do you want to just put it on the, the front and we all can see it? Here, Katie, just want to put this one on there. We can look at it and flip it. Yeah, I didn't mean to ruin it. It's not attached. Do we have an issue if that's in a packet? It's on an agenda item. It's just not in their packet that we put out. Because we're still publishing it via, okay, perfect. Everybody will see on their screen? Yep, there's the FEMA pipe.
A portion of it, right. Katie, then why the yellow line probably, that's the?
Is it the forty-five thousand dollar one?
It's twenty-two thousand seven. It's twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifteen, so that's the first delivery load, if I remember right, because we had two loads. Council, if you have any questions, feel free to speak up.
So that is, we have a nineteen nineties era ambulance that we didn't believe it would make it, but it was driven to Pennsylvania. It's used as their sewer camera jet truck. And so it was driven to Pennsylvania, but it was towed back, not towed back. It was on a trailer coming back, and we were responsible for the fees for both the toll roads in both Ohio and Pennsylvania, and so they billed us for that.
Motion to pay the bills on the floor when everybody's done. There's a, there's a second? Second by Council General. I'll give another minute for everybody.
I questioned that, too.
Everybody's all good. Everybody's reviewed it. Motion to approve, pay the bills. All is in favor, signify by saying aye. What about saying nay? Motion carries. Thank you for adapting and overcoming on that. There is no consensus agenda item, so at this point in time, I would ask for a motion to move into executive session. Motion to move into executive session by Council Helwig, second by Council Murrah. We'll move into executive session. We'll ask that everybody, all the spectators and visitors, please be excused from the room.